I'd like to welcome everybody, thank everybody for showing up tonight. I will start off as always.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Secretary, if you can have a roll call, please.
Joel King.
Here.
Mark Smith.
Here.
Eric Snuff.
Here.
Lynda Garrick.
Here.
Secretary Lundee, here. Vice Chair Benz.
Here.
Chair Jean Lort.
Here.
Okay, on our next item, we have any announcements or correspondence?
No.
Anybody? Okay. Okay, we're going to the order of business here, the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion, we approve it?
Second it.
Has it been sent in?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The next is approval of the May 14th, 2024 meeting minutes. Anybody have any changes or corrections to be made?
Nope.
I would like to ask, on the approval of the special meeting minutes of March 19th, I had said Lynda Garrick has to remove Joel King from roll call. I just want clarity, that's for the March meeting?
If you're asking if that was taken, yes.
Well, it just says asked to remove Joel King, I don't want to just remove Joel King.
Well, I double take.
I assume it's from the minutes.
I took a double take when I read that.
Yeah, it's a little confusing, just adding March meeting somewhere. And that being said, I would make a motion to approve the minutes as corrected.
You have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, second item on the agenda is a planner update on ordinances.
Sure, so at our last meeting, we discussed a couple of potential ordinance changes, one to the open space preservation, one to removing the PUD development, or the PUD chapter. We also talked about private sanitary sewer collection system, the private, I guess, community waste utility systems. And there are some things that we still need to correct in that, and there are some things that we still need to have a conversation on my end, between the attorney as well as the township engineer. We did make one change to the proposed ordinance 24. On the first paragraph, it stated, when you saw it at your planning commission meeting, that, let's see, and treat, its very last sentence, and treat sanitary sewage from more than one dwelling unit, that should read, and treat sanitary sewage for any use.
We don't have that in front of us.
It's from our last meeting, so it would be in your minutes.
I don't see it in the minutes.
I don't see it.
Not in the minutes?
No.
Nope.
We still have, like I said, we still have some work to clarify on that with the township engineer and the township attorney. The one that we wanted to talk to you about this evening was specific to pocket parks. And we had some language before your last one regarding pocket parks, and how you wanted to consider those or handle those. And one of the things that you had discussed was the potential size for a pocket park. And at the time, I had it written in my notes that you would consider a pocket park two acre or less. And we have a parcel across the street that what kind of initiated this pocket park discussion is, and correct me if I'm incorrect, Pauline, is it about five acres?
The property question across the street is certainly under five acres. And in the minutes on page two, it references the board indicated out zone areas of township and that's during the community wastewater utility system.
So, the question that we had tonight, specific to the pocket parks, is, is the planning commission still comfortable with the two acre size? Or are you comfortable with a larger size, somewhere possibly up to five acres? Isn't that something we want your feedback on, to determine how we finish drafting that section for your review at your next meeting?
Is there some way we could kind of make it up to where we can consider each site that's brought to us? Pauline?
In the five acre designation, it actually says that in that area, a public park can be used. So maybe if there are times allowed, you could look at that verbiage and see if it can't be carried over into other areas.
Okay.
So that you wouldn't even have to mess with a pocket park. It's a more generic, it's just like, you can, a public park can be put in.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. Does anybody else have any other questions?
Where does that exist, what you just mentioned?
Under the five acre designation, there is an area, and I don't have it with me, there is an area that actually says that a public park, and it goes on and lists a few other items, are allowed in the five acre designation. So maybe instead of trying to struggle with what a pocket park is, and trying to make it fit a piece of property that's usually much larger than a pocket park, maybe we just need to insert that language into an area that the township is looking into.
It's a good option. Okay.
Insert the pocket park language into the five acre, or insert the five acre language into the pocket park?
No, take it away. Not into the pocket park, but into the designation, let's say, of a two acre. And when you look up the fragile water course in the master plan, it actually lists what designations are allowed. So maybe we stick it into one of those designations, and F for an RE, and then that property could fall into place that way, instead of forcing a four acre into a pocket park.
Okay.
So we're not really going to be putting any size into it, into the pocket park definition?
This is just another option, if you don't want to force a pocket park of four acres, it's just another option that I stumbled upon in the five acre designation.
Most definitions that I saw just said small size and minimum density.
Four acres is not.
Yeah, it's not really relevant to corral it into a size, is that where we're going?
If I understood Pauline correctly, what she's saying is there's a whole nother approach to classifying the property across the street as a park, that doesn't utilize a pocket park definition.
It'll be similar to the five acre, but you just need to decide where to insert it, and then the property would have to be rezoned.
Now, is the five acre district, is that the only one that mentions parks?
That's the only one that I found, other than the actual recreation area. I found it in the five acre designation.
Does our Addison Township ordinances address a public park? Is that where you're getting at the five acre, you're just saying those are an example of what it called?
I think Lynda brought that up in the past, that our park ordinance needs to be updated. And I agree, 100%, it does need to be updated.
So, like the watershed park?
Yes.
The watershed park, what classification does that have?
That's under our Parks and Recreation.
That's under Parks, correct.
That's what's addressed in our park ordinances, regulations for the watershed park. It doesn't have anything else, which is why the pocket park would be good, because we have it on this property and across the street. But watershed and the other park that we have, we need to work on those, I think.
What's across the street? Where the library was going to go?
That's where the library was going to go, yes.
That's going to become a?
Park.
Didn't know that.
Maybe.
You don't know that.
Maybe, yeah, it's something to think about, I guess. What's it, how is it zoned now? It's residential, across the street?
Across the street, no, it has different zonings.
It has a couple different zonings. One is C line, one is R one, I think, and then there's a higher density. But none of those are conclusive to the master plan, what the master plan indicates for a, I can't think of the word, water, or the preservation, lake lot preservation. So when you look at the master plan, it encourages one, two, and three acre zoning.
What is the difference between park zoning that we have, and the five acres, and the pocket park zoning? What gets taken away or added?
So, pocket park is a specific definition, it's a specific type of park. And within your, I have the language pulled up, so in the real estate residential district, under section 6A point 02, principal uses permitted, it just states publicly owned and operated museums, parks, playfields, libraries, and other recreational facilities. So it doesn't, it's not specifying pocket parks there. And when we started talking about the pocket park designation, the question became, when does that apply, where does it apply, and what size constitutes when it goes from a pocket park to a regular park? And so, right now, that's the language as it exists.
It's pretty generic.
Yeah.
You could put that in any zoning ordinances and let somebody do a park in an acre, or two acres, or suburban farms?
Sure, and in certain instances, and I think that's, you know, the other side of this, is, the way it was presented here for the Article 4, is that it says, pocket parks shall be considered and allowed use in all zoning districts, encourages areas of recreation that provide for safe outdoor area, relaxing area, activity with a low impact use and minimal traffic. And that's very specific to what that is defined as, as well as, you know, the limitation of size. But if we're looking to, for example, a different property that is four, or five, or six acres, that's a big property, that really doesn't fit a pocket park. So is it really trying to change the definition of a pocket park to meet a potential four or five acre property? Or if you already allow parks on five acre properties, how does, how could we, easier, I guess, accommodate without having to try to change everything related to a pocket park? Is that making sense?
Yeah, one quick question, you mentioned that pocket parks are public owned. So in other words, a resident can't put a commercial pocket park up for business?
Could they do, could they do that under a special use permit?
You can't have, technically, you can have deed restricted properties, that, you know, a family deed restricts a property, or gifts a property to a community. But you also have situations where you may have condominiums, subdivisions, or private neighborhood associations, that would have restricted open space for the use of their association members. So I wouldn't just limit the definition of a pocket park to a public space. It says, in the definition here, is small park accessible to the general public? And I changed that, or to, you know, within a private association. That was what I was going to bring back to you, but I didn't want to go any further with it until we actually kind of had an idea of, based in our last meeting, I have written down two acres or less. But I wanted to make sure, is that, is that the intent, or is there another alternative?
Do other communities have what we, what we're talking about in place already? They do? Yeah. So?
What size do they have?
Yeah, that's where I'm going with this, yeah, what size, what size restrictions would they have?
I can do that research.
I can speak for like Troy, a lot of them are just acre, an acre and a half, they're within a subdivision. So if they build a subdivision, they, the city determines how many pocket parks they have to have.
Okay. Specifically, if there's developed as site condominium developments, there is a requirement for common area. So that's, a lot of times, that's how that's figured out, is, you know, what is, what is general common area, what is set aside for public recreation, that sort of stuff, within that specific development, which is generally a private neighborhood association, not necessarily public land open to all the public.
The other, excuse me.
No, go ahead.
The other thing I heard is that there possibly be some indicators in the master plan where such places can go?
In your future land use, you would have discussion about that, what classifications, these types of things, what land use districts they fall in. I don't know if, I would have to go back and look at the current master plan and see what it speaks directly to that right now. But yes, the master plan generally can identify, and should identify, areas for recreational consumption. That doesn't, yeah.
That's why I'm bringing it up, if there's something already a little bit in place, we should be going to that and help us frame the size maybe, not necessarily the location, but.
Are you aware of any disadvantages of putting a limitation on the size of a pocket park?
The, I guess the question in my mind becomes, if a pocket park is defined as a specific use, or land use category, and the park is already defined, where do you, where do you draw the line? If, are you, do you want to allow just all parks, without a delineation? Or do you want to have specific designations for these types of parks that serve a very specific purpose, and that's typically for very small pieces of property? And again, the way that the article here was drafted, that we discussed in your last meeting, is that they shall be considered and allowed use in all zoning districts. Right now, as Pauline indicated, the reference to the RE real estate allowances, a principal use as a park, isn't your five acre district. So, that gives us a line.
I think that's, that's probably good. If the property subject, potential pocket park does not meet the size area for the zoning district, then we could call it a pocket park. I mean, if it were in a 10 acre zoning district, and it's larger than that, it's a park, if the property is less than, then we would call it a pocket park. So would it be based off of the zoning district? I mean, if you're in a two acre zoning, then it's less than? How would that work with combining those parcels, and so what zoning would that?
I think, I can do a little bit more research on specific pocket park language, as to what other communities do, and how they're defining it, and how they're separating out what is considered general parkland versus, I think there are some benefits to having a limitation on where and how pocket parks are cited, specifically as we saw with the library, and how there was some public reaction to taking that type of use, and putting it into an area that's not typically a residential use. And I think similarly, you would want to do that here, where there might be some, some negative feelings about parks and where they're located, and potential impacts to neighboring properties. So I think, if I could just do a little bit more research for you, and see how that's handled, and a few other communities, I think that would be worth your, worth your time.
I guess that was to follow up on that, that was kind of my question, because I was wondering, should we determine something that says, like, is what is governed by the planning commission, and what's governed by the Parks and Rec, our Parks and Rec thing? Is the size matter there?
So, the planning commission would govern it from the zoning perspective, districts that it's located, how it's cited, or where the minimum requirements are for size, if, you know, you have the ability to impose hours for those types of things. But I'll have to, I guess, do a little bit, under your Parks and Recreation ordinance, see how those two would play with each other. Because your Parks and Recreation ordinance is a general powers ordinance, separate from zoning. So it may, it may alleviate all of your regulatory concerns, aside from district location and size of, for location.
Did you say they're redoing the Parks and Rec thing, right now?
No, it was brought, Lynda brought that up to the planning commission's attention, and I agree with her 100%. It needs to be looked at, because it only addresses certain elements of the park.
Okay.
So it really does need a thorough review.
Seems like our other parks are, like watersheds, how many hundred acres?
Lake George? That's smaller, right?
Yeah, but it's still, it's still.
That's pretty good size still. That's over 100 acres, I think.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question here, we're talking about, you know, just in, as a startup conversation, and our planner's going to do some follow up, do we have a timeframe for this, that we want to shoot for?
I.
Is there like, you know, somewhere in the middle of the year?
I think we can have something back to you for your next meeting.
Okay.
For sure.
You know, especially if there's some consideration for a pocket park. We don't want to drag this onto too late, end of the year.
Sure.
You know, so maybe put some next steps in place.
I would say before the next master plan update.
Which is when? Five years, 10 years?
We have them every five years, but.
Yeah, yeah.
When is that?
We asked, we asked for an update, and we're waiting for the timeframe back from CIV, because we're going to go in and address that, and then if there's any areas that need to be changed, we could, because we need to update it. Not by law, but because we don't really have a strong presence of our master plan online. So that's why the board wanted it updated, so that we can have better maps and things of that nature.
And I do know that.
Otherwise, we have like, three years, I think, left on it.
Three years since the last one?
No, we'll have three more years left on it, I think, what the board authorized, a in-between, I guess you want to call, update.
An update, okay.
I know Carmen has a scope prepared, he'll be second to you shortly.
Okay.
If somebody with a five acre parcel brought an application to this board for a park, what would our latitude be to approve or deny it?
It's only for public, it's only for us. That five acre designation was for, let's say, the township. Could you read that again? It's, I thought it meant for township owned property.
So, principal uses. So what it says is, permitted principal uses, publicly owned and operated museums, parks, playfields, libraries, and other recreational facilities.
So it's only for publicly owned, it's not for private?
We have no provisions in any ordinance today for a private park, other than a condominium development where we might require.
No, we have a recreation district.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions?
Would, like Echo Grove, having a playground, that would be on private property, and that would be reviewed under a normal site plan, right? If they made any changes or expanded it, or?
Is it, it's a commercial use?
Echo Grove, yeah, it's a private property.
It's a nonprofit.
Yeah.
Yes, then, yeah, they would be under the provisions of site plan.
It would be the same, I think, as a site plan review for a private park.
I guess that's my question, I'm sorry, I'm new, but if somebody wanted to put a park next to areas that we didn't think it belonged, similar to the library situation, we could just categorically?
Deny it.
Down and say, can't have it.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, under, so within the rule, you do have uses permitted after special approval, number three, private non-commercial recreational uses, institutional or community recreation setting. So it's already classified as a special land use, so it would go through site plan and special land use.
And just to clarify something, Mark, we can't categorically deny it. We can only recommend that be denied, the township board makes that final decision on it.
Well, not with the library, that.
Yeah, special, special land use.
And that surprised me, that whole thing.
So that's.
That was only the special land use part, the site plan.
He just said it's special land use.
So the special land use would be here, you would recommend, and we'll talk about that in the training, site plan, you would review it here, and then provide a recommendation to the township board, yes or no, based on the standards of your site plan requirements. So they have the final, for the site plan itself.
So why do they have final say in the park, and they didn't with the library?
They did. It's two separate items. There's a site plan, and then there's a special land use.
Okay.
Yep. So they had the final say in the site plan.
Understood, but we had the final say in the special land use.
Correct.
So if we would have denied that, or this board would have denied it, there's no site plan to be talked about.
Correct.
Then they can't go to the township board, basically.
Okay.
Okay, Justin.
That's what we got.
Next.
So, we can jump right into, you have a presentation that you put together, and I apologize, there was a couple of changes in my presentation that aren't reflected in your packet, not major changes, first being the picture on the front, and then when we get to the, there is a piece about PUD, and I can talk about what a PUD is, but I'm not going to spend a lot of time, because our plan is to take PUD out of the ordinance. So, jumping right in, if you could, go to page two of your, of your document. And it says, a balancing of interests. So this is when we start talking about planning, and the roles of planning commissioners, and planning commissions, and boards, it really truly is a balancing of interest. We have to strike a consistent position on recognizing that we have those in the community that are absolute property rights, I want my property, I own it, I should be able to do anything that I want to do on it, leave me alone, as well as the public interest, which recognizes that, well, if we let you do anything you want to do on it, that could be something that is not safe, healthy, or fair to other property owners in the neighborhood, in the neighborhood. So, we always like to start out with this idea of balancing of interest, because as planning commissioners, you're often asked to take a position on a, on a matter, and you're asked to take that position in an unbiased manner, meaning that regardless of what our personal situations are in life, or our feelings of how we would want to be treated if it were our property, as a board, we have to come to a position of unbiasedness, and letting the applicant feel like they are absolutely getting a fair hearing and a fair treatment that any other applicant coming forward would get. So, that is a challenge that a lot of planning commissioners struggle with, because, and we'll talk about it later in the, in the presentation, you oftentimes will have a situation where you get a lot of people that will come before you in support of a project, or vice versa, a lot of people that have come before you that aren't in support of the project. And I know that it's hard to, to put on that, that unbiased hat, but that's really what the antenna is here, is recognizing what the balance of public interest is. On your next slide, looking at the township itself, with roles and responsibilities, starting with staff, it is, it is our role to make sure that you have all the information that you need to prepare you for your meetings, that we provide you all of, all of that, those resources and materials. But looking at the sort of roles and responsibilities. But looking at the sort of roles and responsibilities here as it speaks to Addison. The township board is responsible for appointments, ordinance adoptions, budgets, site plan reviews, rezoning and text amendments as far as final approval and the master plan adoption. The planning commission itself is responsible for seeing through and enforcing the master plan as a part of its role from the township board. That you are sort of the shepherd of the master plan. Likewise, the zoning ordinance is the tool that helps you shepherd the implementation of that master plan. You do review site plans and as we spoke, it is a recommendatory review. So you have the first glance at it. You have the first option to determine if it meets ordinance requirements or it does not. And you have the opportunity then to recommend it for final approval or adoption to the board and then special land uses. The zoning board of appeals is responsible specifically for variances, appeals of administrative decisions and interpretations. And so I just kind of wanted to lay out the map of who does what here. Next slide. So we have a number of regulating authorities. We have our statutes. Those are our laws. The Planning Enabling Act, the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, Mobile Home Commission Act, or the Condominium and Land Division Act, as well as our federal and state laws as it relates to land use. Under your supporting, there are other local ordinances that the township adopts. Your subdivision ordinances, or your nuisance ordinances, or as we just discussed, the watershed park ordinance. State laws also weigh in on what we can and can't do when it comes to planning and zoning. And here I have public school land use exemption. And that's really a situation where the state law is very clear. If it's a public school, the locality, the local municipality has the opportunity to review the site plan. But at the end of the day, it's the state that makes the final decision on the citing and making sure that the citing is accurate. Under federal laws, we have things such as the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which is very clear to us that when we make zoning law, we cannot discriminate against uses such as churches, schools, or other institutionalized type uses at a higher level of scrutiny than we would any other use. So for example, if you're going to make a church a special land use in a specific district, that special land use standard applies to all of the uses in that district, not just the church. If you're just applying it specifically to the church, then there is grounds for saying that there is discrimination against that religious use. And we, under federal law, are not allowed to do that. So, whoops, excuse him. We also have case laws. Case laws are laws that come out of the Supreme Court of the United States, or Supreme Court of Michigan, and make a ruling specific to how we can regulate land or specific items. In this case, I added in the case Reed v. Gilbert, which is a landmark decision by the Supreme Court. It was Reed versus the town of Gilbert, Arizona. And that is the Supreme Court decision that explicitly stated that communities could regulate signs from a standpoint of how big they are, where they're located, what types of signs are permitted, and lighting, and setbacks, and all of that. But we cannot regulate content. Any content provision in our ordinance would be unconstitutional based on the First Amendment Free Speech Clause. And so that was a big case for us to let us know, to review all of our sign ordinance provisions and determine that, yes, indeed, we're only regulating signs based on type, size, placement, setback, location. That we're not regulating any content. And why that may be interesting or another way to think about that. Many of our sign ordinances state when and where political signs can be put up, how long they can be put up, whether they're temporary in nature or permanent in nature. And most sign ordinance state political signs are temporary in nature. It's usually, you know, two months before an election, 30 days after an election, they all have to come down. During the last president's term, there are a number of you that I'm sure have seen the Donald Trump flags. And we, there have been a number of municipalities that have challenged the idea that those flags are actually political signs and that they need to fit the political sign definition. But that wasn't the case. Flags were permitted under all of our ordinances. And for us to be able to say if a flag, a flag can say one thing, it can only be an American flag, or it can't say something else, that would be a violation of this law. And so it was something that a lot of communities had to get, you know, come to grips with is that the Trump flags or the Biden flags, or any flag of any politician, were going to be able to continue to fly and not be classified as a temporary political sign because of what it said. What it said is covered in free speech. So, and then last, we have attorney general opinions. And those are opinions that are issued by our attorney general, yes?
Oh, I hate to interrupt you about signs, but we don't really regulate signs too much. Cell towers, I think, is important because there's some statutes about if we were to have a cell tower. Can you go over that a little bit?
Yes. So there are a couple of laws that pertain to cell towers and cell tower placement, cell tower location and right of ways. And essentially, those rulings have preempted to an extent what local zoning can control as far as how those cell towers are located in the public right of way, specifically small cell, which is recently new technology in the last several years. You do still have the ability to state where you believe non-small cell towers can be located, whether co-location is required, meaning if you have an existing tower, other carriers can co-locate on that space. But there are certain provisions that have preempted local zoning regarding small tower placement, specifically in public right of ways. And I think it's important for us to, again, as these cases come down through the courts or through the system, we have to be cognizant of that, make sure that our ordinances are reflective of that.
So if we don't look at big cell towers anymore?
Under your current ordinance? I could, I would have to verify that. There's, like I said, there's really two classifications. And so traditional towers can be covered as a utility or a communications tower. And the ruling itself that sort of preempts the local zoning was only for small cell systems.
What's a small cell?
I would have to defer that one a little bit to more to an engineer. I couldn't speak to the specific technology differences other than they're smaller systems and they're generally located on utility poles or more for local right-of-way scale, not your traditional major carrier tower.
So we've looked at those, that's why I asked you about them?
Sure, sure. We will, I will make a note of that. Okay. Very good. On your next slide, this is more of a repeat of what we've kind of already discussed prior to the training is, what are the planning commission duties? So where you have a decision to make, special land use and master plan amendments. And yes, the final master plan adoption does come from the township board. However, your specific duty when it comes to master plan amendments is for the review of those and that recommendation. Special land use, as we discussed a little bit ago, it is within your ordinance, that that is a specific duty of the planning commission. That they are the final say on special land uses. And when it comes to recommending, you have text amendment, site plan review, rezonings, previously PUD and redevelopment. And I left that in because we haven't removed that section yet. So until that section has been deleted, I wanted to at least state that you have the authority to review that and that you would move that forward. And then final master plan adoption. So for tools to do the job on your next slide, sort of the difference between the master plan and the zoning ordinance is your master plan is your guide. It is the vision for how the community intends to grow, not grow, how you want to classify land and land uses and specific areas and justify that through the data that you collect, the public input that you receive, and a culmination of all of your collective minds, determining this is what is the best vision for our community. The zoning ordinance is your enforcement tool. Again, that is adopted by the township board, but it provides the regulatory language for you to be able to make sure that the master plan is being implemented. Next slide. What is generally in a master plan? And this is not just specific to your community. This is generally what the law recommends be within a master plan. A master street or transportation plan. How do we want to handle our roads and our transportation network? And granted, you are a township, so you have to work with the road commission on that for Oakland County. But you definitely would want to have references to your transportation network. Housing plan. You don't have to have a full-blown housing strategy, but you should have some idea of what housing within your community is doing and how you'd like to see housing growth within the community. Your land use and zoning plan, this is sort of the key of the document. This is where you have your future land use classifications, your future land use map that depicts graphically where you are designating specific districts within your community. And then the zoning plan is how you are directing the connection between your master plan and your zoning ordinance and any zoning ordinance updates that need to be done in the future. And that's important because the Zoning Enabling Act, one of the first things that it states regarding a zoning ordinance is that all zoning should be based on a plan. So this is your space to put that plan in place and say, we acknowledge as a collective planning commission and a community that we agree that this is the plan for our community and this is what we want to prioritize our zoning around. Recreation plan. Some communities have separate parks and recreation plans that are independent documents. But you should at a minimum, if that's the case, refer to that in your master plan. And the biggest reason why a lot of communities have gone to independent standalone parks and recreation plans is because of the ability to apply for grant funding through the DNR trust fund, where the MDNR E said that in order for you to be able to be eligible for some of these grant dollars for your park improvements, you have to have a filed and approved parks and recreation plan. So in either scenario, there should be a recreation component within your master plan that at least acknowledges if you have a parks and recreation plan that there is a connection between the two and both were considered during the planning process. Your facilities plan, which is your capital improvements plan. The Planning Enabling Act gave authority to planning commissions unless expressly stated otherwise by the board that the planning commission would be responsible for preparing your capital improvements plan. And I believe the board here still does that, correct?
Say that again, please?
The capital improvements plan? When the Planning Enabling Act was updated, it gave the responsibility to prepare those to the planning commission unless the legislative body retained that responsibility. So that's my question, is the board retain that? So this board could do it? Okay. And what your capital improvements plan is? Is essentially taking a five to seven-year projection of all capital improvements that you would like to see within the community. Now, since you don't have major water sewer systems, you don't really have to plan for the expenditure of future water and sewer expansions. Similarly, with the roads being maintained by Oakland County, they would be the ones that would be responsible for those future capital projects related to the roads. But you still have public facilities such as this building here, other public facilities within the community. And so at a minimum, you would want to consider those as you go through a process of looking at a capital improvements plan within your master plan. Yes, sir?
I got a question. In the capital improvement plan for the future, does that include the fire department?
It can, yes. I've seen communities that do include apparatus expenditures. And generally speaking, the planning commission doesn't put that together. They request the information and then compile it to a singular document.
But it could be part of that.
Correct. Yep. And then the other plans category is essentially, some communities have economic development strategies. Some communities have specific corridor improvement plans for specific areas. Some communities have downtown plans. So that would be, that would fall under the category of other plans. Under zoning ordinance on your next slide. And again, this is not just specific to Addison, but generally how zoning ordinances are structured. You have your title and scope, your definitions. Your definitions are where you'll find clarity around specific terminology or uses such as lots, such as setbacks, such as pocket park. And we defer to those when there's lack of clarity around specific uses or meanings or definitions to that section. Under your general provisions, those are your general standards. And for Addison specific, there are quite a few things that are considered under general provision. You have essential services, voting place, use of yard spaces and other open areas for storage, ingress egress, visibility, dwellings in non-residential units or districts, road frontage, division of lots, sewage disposal, building grades. Just to name a few. Performance guarantees. These are the standards that you fall back on to determine if a nuisance is present, which could be excessive vibration, sound, dust, those items that could be a nuisance to adjacent properties. You also have landscaping requirements for green belts and maintenance, ponds, bed and breakfasts, adult regulated uses, your signs, condominium projects. So these are the areas under the general provisions where these items are defined and regulated, separate from our very specific uses that are discussed in specific districts. So under your districts, you have any number of them. You have your residential districts, your commercial districts, industrial districts, public districts. And that is where you start to get into the discussion of whether a use is permitted by right or whether it's a special land use. Going from districts, we have our very specific development requirements. So as you've decided something is a special land use, then we go into our development requirements for site plan review and special land uses or your parking or your signage. Aside from that, from those areas that are regulatory of land use, the remainder of the ordinance is directly specific to our zoning board of appeals, how appeals are handled, how variances are issued, where specific appeals can be heard and where they can't. For example, under special land use, appeals have to go straight to For example, under special land use, appeals have to go straight to court. They don't get to go to the zoning board of appeals. Whereas a site plan denial is, is considered an administrative action that could go to the ZDA for a review. And then the last piece of that is administration enforcement. So if we realize, if we find out a violation has been incurred, what are our enforcement remedies? And then also as far as administration is confirmed, how do roles such as the zoning administrator or the building official, what are their official capacities related to administration and enforcement of the ordinance? And we, we talked about that with some of you recently when we were talking about our temporary special events and how those are reviewed, whether, and, and the, the specific language given the first application review authorities to the planning, or to the planner as well as the building official. So that's, that's how it all sorts of, sort of fits together. On the next slide, we like to point this out. It's a, it's an excerpt from the zoning enabling act from 125 3207. Zoning ordinance or decision affect is prohibiting establishment of a land use. And this is where sometimes our public and our, and our roles become at odds. Because it says here, a zoning ordinance or zoning decision shall not have the effect of totally prohibiting the establishment of a land use within a local unit of government and the presence of a demonstrated need for that land use within either that local unit of government or the surrounding area within the state, unless a location within that government does not exist where the use may be appropriately located or the use is unlawful. And essentially what this is stating is oftentimes we hear, we don't want mobile homes. Why? Because we just don't want them. What this is stating within the statute is that's not an option. If there is a demonstrated need within the community and a lawful location where that could occur, the community cannot outright prohibit that use. And so that, that is your, as a planning commission, that is your statutory protection to say, we understand you, we hear that you don't want this use, but under the state statute, we can't just outright say no. We have to find a reasonable place if it's a reasonable use. Now, there is a question, and I've discussed this before with, with attorneys and have not gotten a clear answer. This, this statement of demonstrated need or presence of a demonstrated need. There is no definition of what a presence of demonstrated need is. Now, in the state's case, when it came to mobile homes, they kind of narrowed that in a little bit, but it was specific to mobile homes. It's not specific to, as we're seeing today, some discussion around alternative energy, solar fields, what is considered a presence of demonstrated need or, or other uses. But I, I think it's worthwhile to understand this clause or this section of the ordinance, or this section of the state statute and, and side on the air of judgment. Is it a, is it a reasonable use? Do we have land within the community where that use could exist? And it is a lawful use? If so, then, then we have to find a place in the community for it.
So this is master plan stuff?
Zoning ordinance.
But it's within the master plan that we would allow certain zoning districts for land use?
Within the master plan, you would, you would designate your future land use categories?
Based off of this?
No. No, this, this is very specific to uses in your districts in the zoning ordinance. And there's uses that are permitted either outright, not permitted, or permitted by special land use. This is where that language pertains.
Okay.
When the state ballot initiative made marijuana legal state in Michigan, one of the things that came before the township board was apparently we had the option to decline to accept any provisioning centers in the township.
Correct.
Was that unique to that particular?
Correct. Next slide is just a, a distinction of the zoning map. And the, the importance of this is that the zoning ordinance and the zoning map are both adopted legal documents. While they often go together, the, the reality is, is that the zoning map itself is also adopted by the community just as the zoning ordinance is. And, and so we just wanted to make sure, because we do get the question all the time, is the zoning ordinance, is a zoning map part of the ordinance or a separate document? But under the act, the, the map is adopted as well and becomes the official map of the community. They're just all stuck together. Next slide. Yes, sir?
Okay. Talking about the zoning map, in the previous slide, you talk about this, this act for special land use. So if I understand that right, and when you do the zoning map, you have to keep the special, the land use in mind. Right? Or, or by, you know, you know what I'm saying?
So it all goes back to, it all goes back to your future land use plan?
Right.
Which is the zoning plan in which you establish your land use categories.
Right.
Residential, agricultural, commercial, industrial, or otherwise. And then when you establish your zoning ordinance, you establish your specific land use districts, whether it's your RE district or your suburban farm district or your, your, your commercial C1 or your C2. And within those districts, that's where you're going to classify those uses that are, are appropriate within those districts. And, and so that's, that's where that comes into play is...
Yep. So they complement each other is what you're saying?
Correct, correct.
They have to.
Correct. And, and a lot of instances, when a new master plan is completed and a new zoning ordinance is adopted, you will see some very clear similarities within those maps, the future land use map as well as the zoning map. But the future land use map does not do generally, and not all, in some instances it does, but it doesn't always go into the detail. So if you say this area in your future land use is generally considered commercial, what the zoning ordinance would do then is very specifically designate within those areas what is considered C1 commercial, what is considered C2 commercial. So there would be some variance on that, but not necessarily, not necessarily always.
Thank you.
Under, under site plan review, this is, this is where your opportunity is, is to determine if an applicant that is bringing forward a plan for development or redevelopment of a site is meeting your ordinance standards. In this community, site plan is not always required for single-family or most interior work. There are specific designations where site plan is triggered and what a site plan must be provided. But generally speaking, it is not for a single family. It does not kick in until you get to multifamily. And then it ensures, this, this is our tool to ensure that development is safe and functional. And when we talked about the library, we spent a lot of time discussing the safe nature and the functionality, more mostly around the, the road itself and the traffic ingress and egress and how that worked. But that's our opportunity to, A, make sure that it's going to be safe and require the relevant data to give us the, the confidence that the proposed development will be safe, whether that's traffic studies or, you know, blessing from the road commission for Oakland County or otherwise. It also gives us the opportunity to make sure that a site will be developed meeting our community standards for quality and design. So you have language in your ordinance that talks about building materials and what, what buildings should look like, where the setbacks are, where the placement is on the site. And, and, you know, generally speaking, how does it fit into the community character of the area and the existing character? So this is our chance to, to really get a look at that and understand that and make sure that we're not just accepting a development that was drawn on a, on a napkin, that somebody wants to come in and put up a pole barn in a, in a place where that's not appropriate or doesn't meet our standards. That's why we require this. What the site plan review does not do is allow us to prevent use, allow us to prevent a use as zoned. So if you have a use that is permitted in a district or by, permitted by a special land use, the site plan doesn't give us the ability to basically deny that. In other words, if the plan that's presented before you is, is zoned for the district in which they're bringing the application forward in, and it meets the standards of your ordinance, then we generally have to approve. That's, that's how the zoning enabling act is written. The other piece that site plan review doesn't allow us to do is hold applicants hostage to off-site improvements. So the state law is very clear that you can have conditions of approval that generally show that they're mitigating impacts to the surrounding properties as a result of that development. What we can't do is say, this new development is going to really create an issue with, with traffic congestion, so you need to widen two miles of road to offset that. That's, we, we just can't do that. We, we can find ways to minimize off-site impact to traffic as a result of that, but we can't, we can't require somebody to, like I said, repave two miles of road because we think they need to widen the road because they're going to have more traffic as a result of this.
If, if there was a, something that was not a single-family home or obviously not interior work and it's something new that's being built or something, is that something that should be coming to the planning commission all the time?
Like a new subdivision? Like a new subdivision or any like?
Yes.
That would come.
What about that boat house?
A new subdivision, a new, a new commercial use in any commercial district.
A multifamily, multi-unit place? It should, it should always be coming to the planning commission?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Carol, do you have something?
The boathouse, I mean, how did that just appear, never came before us?
Well, I think that went through the building department there. There was this, there was existing structure there, wasn't there?
Well, it wasn't anything like what they got now.
Well, it may not have been, but I mean, I don't know what the building requirements are either. Because in a lot of, in a lot of places, if, as long as you leave one wall up, it's not considered a new build, it's considered a remodel. I don't know.
We do, we do still have standards though within the ordinance that specifically tell us when site plan is, is required and when it's not. Uh, yeah, let's see. So approval, erection, moving, relocation, conversion of a structural alteration to a building or structure to create additional floor space, any condominium development, a use not previously approved, addition of a land or building, expansion of paving or off-street parking or change in circulation or access, any excavation, filling, soil removal, mining, landfill is defined in the ordinance, other than normally incidental to single-family uses. And then any proposal to create, expand, or alter a use or structure which involves using, storing, or generating hazardous substances. So those, and it states at the beginning of that section, in each zoning district except for detached one-family, single-family residential uses and permitted agricultural uses, none of the following activities may be undertaken until the planning commission is reviewed and the township board has approved a site plan for such use. So the, it's very specific is when we bring a site plan to you or when we don't.
Are there municipalities that are creating zoning types that allow them a great deal of latitude in denying a site plan or a proposed development? And I'm thinking specifically of a municipality south of here where it almost seems like if they don't like the, the color of paint somebody's going to put on it, they deny it, which isn't an ordinance.
So you can have architectural standards and design standards, and that's on the next page on your next slide. Certain elements can be required as far as the types of building materials, the architectural stylings. Color is generally not something that we, we look at as much as we do the design itself. We, we consider those design guidelines or in some instances, non-residential design standards. And, and they are appropriate because they allow you to determine the essential character of the area. Making them so strict that a development could not get past them, that would be detrimental. That would be, I, I think, enforceable. Similarly, the other items that, that we consider, landscaping, parking, circulation, pedestrian facilities, lighting, utilities and drainage, signage, and these aren't always considered here at the planning commission level. Utilities and drainage, will you see them on, on your plan? We rely on the report from the township engineer to let us know if the utilities and drainage are meeting the township standards, the county standards, and otherwise. But, but those are items that you can expect to see on any site plan that you receive. On the next slide, special land uses. So I, I have a few slides here and I brought in specific language from your ordinance and some specific examples. So special land uses are uses that are otherwise compatible with a district but require additional review or scrutiny due to special conditions and may only be appropriate at certain locations. So under section 30.06 of your ordinance, we have 10 standards that we have to look at that are, are subjective when it comes to approving any special land use. And these need to be applied to all special land uses. The location and size, the intensity of the principle under accessory operations, that they're compatible with adjacent zoning of land, that they're consistent and promote the intent and purpose of the ordinance, that they protect the public health, safety, and welfare as well as the social and economic well-being of those who will use the land or activity, residents, business, and landowners immediately adjacent. So that's, that's on the first page and on the second page to be continued. Some state that there be of such design and impact of the location and height of buildings that the location, nature, and height of walls, fences, and nature, and extent of landscaping shall not hinder or discourage the appropriate development of the use of adjacent land. And lastly, the location, the size, intensity, and site layout be such that operations will not be objectionable to nearby dwellings. So these are your 10 general standards. And again, they're very subjective. Each of you has the opportunity to weigh the, the application to determine if those 10 standards are, are met. And, and you may have one interpretation of whether the standards met and you may have another interpretation of the standards met. But at the end of the day, as a collective body, when it comes time to take a vote, a majority of you will have had to have determined that you have enough information, that you have enough factual evidence to state that yes, this proposal will not impact our, our, our standards. On the next slide, looking at section 30.7, conditions. The law also gives the planning commission the ability to impose additional conditions to an approval of, of a special land use above and beyond the general standards. And, and this, this is a, a more specific now than the general standards. And it gives you four standards for when you can apply those conditions. One, to ensure that public services and facilities affected by a proposed land use or activity will be capable of accommodating increased service and facility loads caused by the land use and activity. Specific to that, when we talked about the library then, and the traffic and whether or not the impact of the traffic going to that site, if the road would be capable of, of handling that increased traffic. And we received a report from the road commission that, that generally felt that that would be fine and that the level of impact from that library would not have a major impact on, on that, on that road. Again, that's, at the end of the day, not for me as a consultant to decide. That's for you to decide if, do you have enough information that, that this standard applies? And if not, what additional condition needs to be applied as, as a condition of approval to ensure that these facilities can handle that increased load? Two, to protect the natural environment and conserve natural resources and energy, you can impose specific conditions to make sure that natural areas, wetlands or others that are on that that are on that property will not be impacted by the development. Three, ensure compatibility with adjacent uses of land. In this case, in order to ensure that compatibility, we added time restrictions to both hours of operation, as well as when the lights could be, had to be turned off, specifically to minimize the offsite impact to the neighbors of a commercial parking lot and that light pollution that could occur from that use, which is previously not there. So that would be how that standard would apply.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Back to, when we were talking about the traffic and the concern about the traffic on that particular project, would we have, although road commission commented on it, would we have been able to, like, add additional conditions? I know you said we can add...
So in that case, because the road commission has the jurisdiction over the road, you would be able to express your concerns to the road commission and ask them to consider? And that would have been worth at least tabling the discussion. If you thought there was more that the road commission could consider, or if you had specific considerations you wanted them to reply to, you could definitely table that decision. But at the end of the day, that jurisdiction falls to the road commission, so they would be the ultimate determinant. The last paragraph, and this is directly from your ordinance, it says, "Any conditions imposed shall be recorded in the record of the special land use approval. These conditions shall not be changed except upon the mutual consent of the planning commission and the landowner." What that is stating is, if you are approving a special land use and you are imposing specific conditions above and beyond your general conditions, you should place in your record of the minutes the reason why you're imposing those, what those conditional considerations are, and what impact you're mitigating as a result of. Which, and I know we did in the library case, you added the condition of the lighting shall be turned off at the specific hour, and the reasoning was to prevent light pollution on neighboring properties. But it is in your ordinance that it is intended to be in the public record of any decision that whatever condition you impose above and beyond, you state that in your minutes or in your motion. So to further sort of clarify on your next slide, special land use standards, general and discretionary. We've already gone through your general and discretionary, which are the 10 standards we looked at a few pages before. I wanted to include on your next page, an example of what are considered non-discretionary standards. These are standards that are established in your ordinance, and this comes from section 14.04, permitted uses after special approval in your C1 district. It says, "The following uses shall be permitted only after special approval is granted by the planning commission in accordance with the procedures, requirements, and standards set forth in this section and in Article 30." Article 30 is your special land use chapter, and where your general standards are found. In this case, you also have very specific standards that apply to these very specific uses. I chose dining room restaurants only subject to the following. One, that ingress and egress to the site must be directly from a minor thoroughfare. B, all refuse and refuse containers shall be completely screened from public view. And C, design and orientation of the proposed use shall be such as to reasonably minimize noise, odors, traffic problems, and similar factors. So these conditions are explicit to this use on top of your general standards, on top of any additional conditions you may impose as a planning commission. So when an application for a special land use comes to me for review before it gets to you for consideration, I'm going to analyze, A, does it meet general standards 1 through 10 in Article 30? B, does it meet the specific standards set forth here in section 14.04, specific to dining room restaurants? And then lastly, I will identify to you if I believe there are any additional conditions that you may want to consider. Again, under the Act, I have in the orange writing down here, if all standards are met, approval must be given. So that's pretty clear in the zoning enabling act. And that was put in there for the purpose of past experiences with communities over the years, essentially stating, there's nothing you can ever do to meet our standards. You can bring us all the data you want in the world, but there's nothing you can ever do to meet our standards because it's subjective. So it's intended to say, these are the general standards, but after a certain point of time, if you believe there is a piece of information or data that can satisfy in your mind that the standards are met, then you'll need to ask for that specifically from the developer, because we can't continue to go in the circle of, no matter what you're telling me, even if your data shows what you're telling me is probably true, I still don't believe it meets the standards. We can't do that. Does that make sense? Next page, we can skip over this one. This is for planned unit developments. Since we're pulling that out of our ordinance, we'll jump right into non-conformities. So non-conformities are a building, use, or lot that at one point in time met the requirements of our zoning ordinance when it was established, but currently no longer complies with our ordinance. And there are some types and issues related to this, and why. So under uses, expansion, enlargement, abandonment, substitution, classification. These are issues that we can look at when it relates to uses. If it's a non-conforming use, our ordinance is very clear about when that can be expanded. Also, it's very clear about if that use is abandoned for a certain period of time, that that use may not be reestablished as a non-conforming use. Any use reestablishment would have to comply with the ordinance. Similarly, under buildings, it defines for us when an expansion can occur, or an enlargement, or an extension, or rebuilding. And I put act of God in here because many times we say in our ordinances that if a building is a non-conforming building, is destroyed more than 50%, then we can't rebuild it. Or in some communities, they say, well, if it is destroyed 100%, that it can at least be rebuilt to its original footprint, but it can't be expanded. Specific to expansion of a non-conformity. There is language that lets us know what is considered an expansion versus a enlargement versus an extension. The best way I can describe that is, so you have a residential piece of property, your side yard setback is 10 feet. Now, when you built your house, it was five feet, so you built it a five-foot setback. Now you're non-conforming because the new ordinance requires you be at a 10-foot setback. What we consider to be an expansion or an enlargement of that non-conformity is any new construction that further increases the non-conformity. So if you want to put an addition on your home, and you'll be extending it to only three feet from the property line, that would be an expansion or enlargement of the non-conformity. It would not be considered an expansion if you were doing a building addition and you were reducing the non-conformity. So you weren't going all the way to the 10-foot setback, but you were going somewhere between 5' and 10'. That's a reduction of the non-conformity, would not constitute an enlargement or an expansion. Additionally, if you were extending your property or your house by addition, another 20 feet, but you were not going any further into that, that would not be considered an expansion or an extension. So you were just staying at the existing non-conformity, that setback. What we ultimately want to see is all non-conformities go away, and that they all come into compliance with the ordinance. But we have to be very specific as to how that happens, and the ordinance lays out when those specific instances apply.
I just want to ask, because I'm like totally confused on what you said. So if you had a setback that's five feet when you built it, and now the setback's 10 feet, if you want to do an addition at five feet, that's not an expansion?
It's not.
Shouldn't the new construction conform with the current zoning? Because otherwise, you're expanding a non-conformity.
So, and I guess I would have to... Most ordinances look at it as, yes, the ultimate goal is to decrease the non-conformity.
If you're expanding it...
I guess that example should have specified that the addition is, with the assumption that the wall that is the non-conforming wall is staying in place. If it was being completely demolished and then rebuilt, yes, then it would have to come into the compliance with the new setbacks. But if you just wanted to expand that wall an additional 10 feet, and we're staying at the existing five-feet setback, that is not considered an expansion of the non-conformity.
I've worked in four communities doing exactly this is my job.
Yeah.
And I've never, ever been able to compromise on that expansion. It's got to meet the current zoning.
Sure.
So that's not everywhere, just saying.
And that's where each specific zoning ordinance is... Non-conformities can each be handled in specific ways. And, gosh, we just did an ordinance update in Owasso that classified non-conformities by non-conforming use A or non-conforming use B, and the ZBA had to determine what that non-conform...
Symbols, yeah.
Yeah, and it just becomes a nightmare. The ultimate goal of the non-conformity is, A, to recognize that you have these uses, structures or lots, that at one point, when the ordinance was established, met that ordinance, and now, under the new ordinance, or a new ordinance, no longer meet. There has to be a provision for those uses to continue to exist, make improvements, or... Essentially, ultimately, we want to see those uses go away or come into compliance. You often hear the term grandfathered use. That's where the term cuts in. Grandfathered use is a non-conformity. And the ultimate goal in every ordinance is that the non-conformity cease to exist. But we have to give those property owners the ability to exist within that realm until they have the opportunity to bring it to compliance. Yes.
Justin, you just mentioned, under CBA, we deal with non-conformities all the time. Can you tell me why this non-conformity discussion is happening in the planning commission? How do we look at it from the planning commission viewpoint versus what we talk about in the CBA?
So, and on the next slide, or on your next slide, so where the planning commission would discuss non-conformities and where it would be important for you is specific to the zoning ordinance itself. And the reasoning that is, is because you'll set the language, or draft, or craft the language along with myself, the attorney, and send that language to the township board for approval as part of the zoning ordinance. So you get to determine at the planning commission level what your vision for non-conformities are, and how you want to see them handled through the zoning process. Additionally, where you would have the ability to review that is if a site plan were to come before you, or a special land use were to come before you, one of the things that we always want to look at first is, are there any non-conformities with the property, with the lot itself, or the structure that's intended to be built? Or are there any historical non-conformities that exist on this site? And if so, we want to make sure that that's clarified and understand what that is, so we can make sure that under the new proposed site plan, that that would be corrected. As far as the ZBA is concerned, there are lots of instances where ZBAs will get applications for variances for setback purposes, putting additions on properties. And the question is, is it a non-conforming use? And if so, is the applied variance increasing the non-conformity, reducing the non-conformity, or enlarging the non-conformity? And that has a big impact on how the ZBA rules, and how you look at... Because the ordinance itself describes when those types of activities can occur, and then what the process is for allowing for an expansion or an enlargement. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. We had a good example in this community. We had a veterinary clinic expansion several years back on a non-conformant, you know, situation. And I was just wondering, so we more or less determine the ordinances that the CBA that we enact on. So I understand now, you know, why you have it in here. Because the CBA uses what gets created in this body, more or less.
You can't expand a non-conforming use, or you can.
So what the Addison language says is, "No building or land or part thereof in Addison Township shall be used, altered, reconstructed, reconstructed, or moved within or into said township without a variance, except in conformity with the ordinance." So that language is very specific for what cannot happen here. I was trying to see...
Is there like grand...
Yes, it does say, and so what I was... It says, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, the zoning board of appeals may grant variances to extend or expand non-conforming structures, but not to the degree of non-conformity. A parcel which is non-conforming due to area, lot width, road frontage, or depth-to-width ratio may not be altered to increase the number of building sites and parcels, except with a conformity." So the language that I was saying, usually the planning commission has the ability to, or the administrative members, being the zoning administrator or otherwise, have some leeway to non-conformities. Here, it expressly gives that to the ZBA.
Right, that would be where I thought it would be.
Yep.
So there are big differences between uses and buildings, so structures versus uses.
Correct.
Are two huge different things that we're talking about, so I think we're kind of mixing them up a little too.
Correct, because again, the buildings itself, that's the example I used. You have a property, you have a building that's on a five-foot setback or a 10-foot setback is required. That's non-conforming structure. A non-conforming use is a use that was previously permitted in a district, and either that district was eliminated or changed, but for whatever the reason, that use is no longer permitted in that district. Therefore, that's a non-conforming use. And again, most people call that a grandfathered use. Well, I get to keep my gas station here because it was established in 1920 when they were allowed. It's never ceased to exist, and even though your zoning classifications have changed, as long as I continue to operate it, I'm grandfathered in. That's a non-conforming use.
You can't make a bigger gas station, though.
Correct.
That's the point. Okay.
Yep. So when we talk about non-conforming issues, one, it goes with the land, not the owner. So if you have a non-conforming house, you sell the house. That doesn't automatically mean that the new person that owns it has to bring it into compliance. It goes with the land. What happens when you rezone to make something non-conforming? This is what we just spoke to with the grandfathered uses, is you have language in your ordinance that states that the intent is to always move towards reducing or eliminating non-conformities in the township. And so, in this case, recognizing that whenever you're going to change your zoning map or your uses that are permitted in each district, always recognize, one of the first things that you look at is, are we creating any new non-conformities? So if you're changing your commercial districts or your industrial districts, that would be one of the things that you would focus on. And again, if you adopted a new zoning map, changing your zoning district boundaries, you would again go in and say, okay, we're going to change these agricultural and rural residential district boundaries where somebody is currently bound by a five-acre or 10-acre minimum parcel of land. Now, we're requiring that they're under a 20-acre parcel of land. That's created a non-conformity. So you always want to be aware of what those changes to those districts, both uses of land or structures, because there will be an impact. You cannot have... You cannot have any scenario at which you are not creating at least one, one non-conformity, or at least if you can, I haven't seen it by 22 years. But ensuring that you have a plan and you have lawful language in your ordinance that says how those non-conformities can continue to exist, that's, that's the important part. I also wanted to quickly note the impact on sales, licensing and financing with non-conformities. So generally speaking, if you are a non-conforming use or a non-conforming structure, and you want to go and apply for a refinance or a new loan or a mortgage, the first thing the bank will ask the community, is this a non-conforming use or a structure? And if we say yes, predominantly speaking, that financing cannot occur. They don't let that non-conformities. So I'm not going to say that's a 100% certain for every institution, but if all the institutions where I've had this happen in communities in my experience, that has been the case, they will not let that non-conformities. So, just wanted to bring that up. Under rezoning, there are two types of rezonings. There are text amendments and there are math amendments. It is a, an amendment to the ordinance that changes the zoning designation of a specific property from one district to another. The rezonings are evaluated to determine if they are consistent with the master plan, compatible with surrounding uses, and capable of accommodating possible uses. That's general. You also have specific language in your zoning ordinance that describes the conditions that must be met when evaluating a rezoning. And those conditions, again, if you were to get a letter from me, there is a property that would like to rezone, you'll get a letter from me comparing that rezoning and the potential impact of that rezoning against the standards of your ordinance, that then you'll get to decide whether or not that meets those standards. Again, the final adoption of a rezoning is at the township board level. But you, you will have to make a recommendation one way or another. Recommend to approve, recommend to approve with conditions, or recommend to deny, based on the criteria within your dis, within your ordinance. On the next slide, pardon, I just got, I just got my sinuses crazy this evening. On the next slide, we talk about spot zoning. And there's a lot that has been said about spot zoning. And generally what a spot zone is, is if you have a, a large tract of area that is zoned one district, and you have an applicant that wants to rezone a specific parcel within that large tract of area to another district that is completely outside of the realm of what that district is. So for example, let's just take a section area of the township that's zoned agriculture. And all of a sudden, somebody wants to rezone five acres commercial. That would be a spot zone. It's out of place, it's not in your master plan. It's one little parcel out of this entire section that would not be consistent. But we wanted to make sure that we point out that is not a parcel that is small in size relative to its surroundings, allows uses that are inconsistent with those allowed in the vicinity, and then confers a benefit to the property owner that is not generally available to other properties in the area. And that, that would speak to, all of the property owners in that area are residential or agricultural property owners. And this is going to be a small space that's going to give somebody a commercial designation that no one else in the area has. That would be a classic definition of a spot zone. But it's important to state that a spot zone is appropriate in certain circumstances if it complies to your master plan. So if you're future land use, you've designated an area within this large predominantly rural agricultural residential area as commercial. Even though the zoning, even though the zoning is not currently reflective of that, if that's how you plan that area and that's what the applicant is asking for, then it is generally accepted that that's not a spot zoning and that you can consider that rezoning, even though these other three conditions otherwise apply. Does that make sense?
So if it's zoned agriculture and they decide they want to put up a Fogler-style farmer's market where they're holding, they're doing commercial sales of their products.
That's right to farm.
Sorry?
I said that's right to farm. This is more like if they're putting in a gas station.
Restaurant.
Yeah.
Restaurant, commercial use, any, any commercial use that, and, and that is not both either planned for in your master plan or currently zoned for.
Is a pocket park an example of a spot zoning, or is that unique?
I think it's too early to say. I think that would be, until we have some specific language describing whether a pocket park is a commercial recreational activity or if it's a public property, I don't think that would, I don't think that would necessarily be the best example.
Okay.
Couple more slides and I'll, I'll be wrapped up. Talking about conditional rezoning. Conditional rezoning is, and, and some communities have, have tried to call it contract zoning, but the, the Act calls it conditional rezoning. It's a rezoning for certain use and development. It offers, it requires offers made to restrict use or development. It requires a voluntary agreement, meaning that it cannot be required as part of the rezoning, that it has a time period to satisfy the conditions of the property or the property reverts to previous zoning. And, and so before I touch on this last bullet, because in this case, you don't allow use variances, so, but I wanted to leave that example in. Essentially what this is saying is that it's a rezoning for a certain use and development, meaning I have a, a use that I would like to rezone for. And instead of rezoning the entirety of my property to that specific district, I'm stating that I will offer you conditions for that rezoning. And you determine whether or not those conditions are appropriate for that rezoning. And, and if the rezoning otherwise meets your standards of your ordinance, then you can approve that rezoning. But it requires that the conditions that are being offered in exchange for that rezoning must come from the developer. We as a planning commission cannot say to a developer, well, we might consider that rezoning if you limit yourself to just a gas station and no other uses in that commercial district, or if you agree to put up more landscaping, or if you agree to limit your hours of operation, or if you agree to any number of conditions. It's, if they are asking for a conditional rezoning, they have to voluntary, volunteer the conditions to us, and then we have to determine if those conditions are acceptable. And if not, you can say these conditions are not acceptable and, and require, and recommend denial of the, of the rezoning. But you, you, you can't, under any circumstance, impose conditions in exchange for that rezoning. The, the statute is very clear about that. The last bullet there says, can be a better tool than use variances, but still they should be used carefully and sparingly. Under the last, under the zoning enabling act, some communities are allowed, if they authorize it in their zoning ordinance, to grant a use variance. Meaning, the use isn't permitted in that district, but we're going to grant a variance for that specific use. You do not, so you don't have to worry about this. But I wanted to at least put it in there for your planning and zoning knowledge, that some communities do, and that it is allowed under, under state statute. Then the last page, updating the zoning ordinance. When is the best time to update the ordinance? When there is new legislation. So we've talked in our last couple of meetings about short-term rentals. We're expecting some new legislation coming down the pipeline. When that legislation is passed, that will be a time to update the, update the ordinance. When there is new case law, when the state of Michigan or the Supreme Court of the United States or the state come down with a new ruling, like we talked about related to signs, it's time to update the ordinance. When our attorney or planning staff tell us to do so, or recommend, I should say recommend, not tell you. But this would be in a situation where, based on the ordinances that you have in place, we believe that they're outdated or that there has been changes in conditions in zoning or, or otherwise, and, and we recommend some updates, which we typically do. D, whenever something comes up that we hadn't anticipated. Again, new uses. Here's a good example. My community that I work with down in Monroe County, Frenchtown Township. We have a agritourism designation, special land use, for farms to be able to get an agritourism designation to allow for barn weddings or special events around orchards and harvests and this and that and the other. Apparently now, there is a business that I never knew existed where, if, if you're, if you're a camper, you, you go campground, campground, campground. Certain farms in certain communities register to be an overnight stay, where you can pull your camper onto their property, stay overnight, and you go on the next day. Never knew that use existed. I've seen where, you know, they've said no overnight parking at Walmart for semi-traders, or you have instances where people pull into public rest areas and stay overnight. I had no clue that farms were being used as overnight stays for the agritourism industry. So we're working on updating that ordinance now to, to address that. So that's, that's something that I could say that we hadn't anticipated. And then lastly, once a year, and, and that doesn't mean update the whole ordinance. That means once a year, when we look back on everything that happened over the year, is anything that's happened in that year warranted updating our ordinance? And a good example of that is, how many variances did we receive for specific uses? Did we receive 50 variances for a setback in a residential district? If so, maybe we want to address that setback. So with that-
Would that be communicating with the ZBA? I mean-
Yeah, and the township board, and, and just understanding what planning decisions we made this year, and are any of those decisions decisions that would want us to look at our ordinance?
Okay. That was very interesting, thank you.
You're welcome.
Justin, thank, just want to thank you for your time and effort-
Yeah.
Yeah.
-explaining some of the responsibilities of this commission here.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you again. Next item on the agenda is public forum. I, I don't see anybody here, so.
No public.
Next is commissioners' reports. Anything from ZBA or Parks and Rec or?
I'll quiet at the CBA right now, but that'll change.
Okay. Okay, well then I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make that.
Got a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Closed. Thanks.